Good evening. This is the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting. It is Wednesday, April 13th, 2022, 6:00 PM. The microphone's very loud. We are at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. This meeting is being recorded by GCTV. Let's move right into the agenda. Secretary Ekstrom, please, a roll call.
Of course. Member Denise?
Here.
Secretary Ekstrom here. Member Johnson Mossad?
Here.
Member Martini?
Here.
Chair Poiroti?
Here.
Vice Chair Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weidiger?
Here.
We are all here and have a corner.
Thank you. Our call to order at 6:01 PM. Let's go ahead and go into the approval of the minutes from both March 9 and March 14, 2022. Without objection, we can do these as a consent item. Do I have a motion?
Salmo.
Any just, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
That was Ekstrom. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Do we have any abstentions from the minutes? Any no votes? The minutes passed unanimously. And next item is public comment. Do we have anyone? Susan Ferber for public comment. Hello. You just turn the microphone on. You might have to hold it till it turns green at the bottom on the collar there. Just state your name and the town you live in, and you have three minutes. There you go.
Hi, my name is Eden Thompson. I live in Greenfield. I have three children currently at Four Corners School. I'd like to share with you my connections to the community. When I first moved to Greenfield, I was administrator at Buckley Healthcare Center for almost 10 years. I was in my time here, an active member of the Rotary for five years, on the United Arc Board for four years. More recently, I was the Director of Fair and Care Center here in Franklin County and had the unfortunate position of closing the facility during the pandemic. I bring this up because I have certainly had my experience of, of meeting many struggles in the hardest of times and have never held my role to the community and my commitment to the community lightly. And also, you know, have never wanted to, to lower my understanding of the impact that I have on the lives of the people of the community. My most current role is, is mom. And to me, is my most important role. And I've had and have expressed in these meetings previously many concerns about the sentiment of, of the school committee meetings. I'm not perfect. I've made many mistakes along the way. I've had to learn the hard way. But I've always accepted my failures and tried to be better because of them. The greatest lesson that I've learned is the value of people and specifically the value of, of my treatment and my actions towards people and the impact that that has. I'm maddened and saddened in what I've witnessed from this committee over the last few years. I've been, like many parents, exploring the idea of having my children grow elsewhere. I've watched examples of hostility, mockery, discrimination, bullying, and an inability to connect with the community from this committee. I'm happy to see that on the agenda tonight, and I know in subcommittee meetings, has been on the agenda, the exploration and consideration for public forums. And, you know, I think that it's important that you understand, you know, even just from one person, myself, that we see the sentiment of these school committee meetings as a public, as controlling, dismissive, and sometimes scary. And I'm not sure we're ready for a public forum, honestly. I, I'm, you can probably hear my voice shaking in front of you all today. I tried to have a private conversation through email, not private, but looked for advice through email from the committee and didn't leave with an answer to my question from three of you who responded to me. We don't know how to navigate the system, and we look to you in these meetings for guidance and advice and clarity, and we are screaming for you to hear us. As a community, we're scared for our children. I don't find it coincidence that the security of our children is of the utmost concern to every parent in Greenfield right now. We hear the stories day in and day out. The teachers don't feel safe. We don't feel safe.
I'm sorry. Need to wrap it up this time.
Okay. So the reason I say this to you is because I'm respectfully requesting that you add some items to future agenda meetings, just three, and I'll be quick. Security in the schools, including a resource office, officer. Question and answer session for parents. And school committee relationships with the community and our teachers. I request that you do a self-evaluation. I was able to find on the website that that is part of the policies. I've never heard that in years come up as part of what you do. So I suggest that you share that with the community. So at least we have a basis of where you think that you are, because we're screaming to you to tell you what we, where we think you are and what we need. And we're not seeing any impact in that. So thank you for your extra time.
I'm sorry, before you go, what was the third thing that you requested? Q and A for parents, SRO, and one, I just want to make sure I have it down.
Question and answer session for parents.
Yep.
And then that you add to your agenda, the school committee relationships with the community and teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to make sure I had them.
Susan Ferber. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Masks and hearing aids don't go along so well together. So, good evening. I have two.
You need to state your name, please.
Doug Selwyn, Greenfield. I have three things to bring up, and the, the first is very briefly, I'm very glad that there, that community meetings are on your agenda. I think that's a great idea, and I'm happy that you're doing it. I want to encourage you to, I know later tonight you're talking about the Fair Share Amendment, and I strongly endorse that. I want to say briefly what it is for folks who don't know. It's a constitutional amendment that increases tax on incomes over $1 million by four percentage points. So if you make $999,999 this year, you don't have to pay any more than anybody else does in terms of rate. If you make $1,001,000, you'd have to pay four cents more. And so for most of us, it's not going to change anything. It does ask the wealthiest to pay more by 4%. And it's estimated to bring $2 billion to the state, which will be applied to education and transportation. So that's our roads, that's our kids, that's our schools. So I hope you will support the Fair Share Amendment. And it's going to be on the ballot in November. And people are starting to organize to gather signatures and, or pledges to, to support the fair share and then to, to vote on it. The other item, very quickly, is the MCAS is upon us again. And I want to be really clear in saying that opting out for grades three through eight is an option. It is legal to do. The schools are required to give the test. Children are not required to take it. And there is no consequence for the kids. There's no consequence for teachers. There's no consequence for school. There's no harm done. All you need to do is write a quick letter to your principal and your child's teacher and say, "I'm choosing to have my child not take the MCAS, ELA, and math, and the school will provide you with a nice quiet place to read," or, or do whatever it is you're going to do. There are a lot of reasons for that. I don't think I'll have time to go through many of them, but I encourage you to recognize that, that the MCAS actually brings more harm than it does value. And so one of the ways to say, both take care of your kids, but also say to the state, "This is a harmful activity that, there's no evidence that shows it leads to better education. This is an act you can take on behalf of your kids, on behalf of the district, and behalf of the state." So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point, I would, is there any other public comment? Okay, thank you. At this point, I just want to make a quick switch to the agenda if we can all agree. I'd like to have a motion to bring forward item Agenda 9, voting to declare surplus items of books to the top of the agenda, because we do have a school librarian, Jessica Pollak, here to speak to that, and we'd like to do that while she's here with us. Is there a motion to that effect?
Salmo.
And a second?
Second.
Great. And any discussion?
Just wondering if we want our report from our student representative first, or you okay to stay, I mean, they both might want to get home.
Find a way if Ms. Pollak would like to go. I can wait a bit longer. That's all right.
Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? So that's a unanimous vote to go ahead with item nine. So in terms of the surplus items, I'm going to start to introduce us and, do you mind? Just coming up here, we may have questions for you, and it just makes it a little easier. And I'll have you introduce yourself in a second. And perhaps you and/or Christine can interrupt me or school me if I do anything wrong about this. So surplus declarations are state-required, an MGL process that is undertaken by schools, municipalities, what have you, when there are items that really are not, are no longer of value or needed in the institution, in this case, in our libraries. And when we do this process as a school committee to declare an item surplus, we're allowing for the process to move forward to not, no longer have those be property of the schools. It does not, in the specific case of books, in this case of library books, it doesn't mean that if we vote it down, that they would go back on shelves. They would just have to be stored somewhere. They've already been through the process to decide that they're surplus property. And with that, I would turn it over to Christine and Jessica to talk about anything further.
So, I don't know. Okay. So Karen's been talking about the weeding process that's been in place. Newton School has been completed at this point. And there are a number of books, as you can see from the online attachment, that you had available to review, that there are quite a few books that are no longer what the library media specialists would determine as valuable to include in our collection. So we are looking to see if they can be declared surplus. If they are, what we would do is offer them for free to any other city department who might want them. If they do, they can take them. And then if they don't, we could either offer them as donations to any of the students, or we could recycle them, or donate to another appropriate agency if they have any interest in them. But it does allow us to no longer have to store them. Storing takes up a lot of space. It's cardboard boxes that can lead to mold and dampness and bugs, mice. So we really would like to minimize the amount of storage that we have in the district, especially if the items are no longer supporting high-quality education for our students. So Jessica's here to answer any questions you might have about the process of weeding. It is a specific process that library media specialists are trained in how to do. So I don't know if you want to have that, a brief summary of what that process is from an expert?
I think that would be super helpful.
Sure. I'm happy to do that. I also will say that the Greenfield School Committee actually has a policy pertaining to deaccessioning library materials, and it outlines some of the criteria that is considered when evaluating materials, such as the materials' condition, the relevance to the current curriculum that is taught within the school, and that can change either by what teachers are doing within classrooms, or as the frameworks shift and change over time, what is needed in the school library shifts as well. It could also be that materials are dated, and so therefore less appealing and not circulating because they no longer reflect what students look like or what they're interested in. For example, I'm reading a book with my daughter that talks about something being $3, and she said, "What, $3?" I said, "Well, it's from the 70s." So you have to sort of consider that. But those kinds of things can really make materials sometimes really irrelevant for students. And then also if there's inaccurate or outdated information, as well as sometimes racist or stereotypes, racist language or stereotypes that can show up, or homophobic language. So those are some of the areas that the librarians look at when evaluating materials to decide whether to keep them or not. And it is a, an ongoing practice that should be happening continuously in libraries because it, you, all, the other consideration is that you also have a finite amount of shelf space within any given library, and you want to make sure that you're maintaining that shelf space for the materials that are going to be most useful and most successful for our students within the school. Any other questions that you have around that process?
Any questions? Yeah. Member Johnson Mossad, go ahead.
What's the process for replenishing the libraries?
Hmm, that's a really good question. I can talk about my process. I am the only certified school librarian in this district, and I have only, I've been the only school librarian, certified school librarian in the district for my entire 12 years. So I can only speak to what happens at my level. We have certainly had people working within some of the school libraries at various points other than the high school, but, and some of them have been certified teachers, but none of them have been a certified school librarian in my tenure. My process is that there's a, a budget that you all have graciously approved, again, for next year. And there's, that amount of budget is then determined by me in consultation with teachers and with students, based on what their usage is and their demand and requests. It's allocated in different ways. And then I review professional journals to look for high-quality materials. I look at awards, award winners, and I look at also New York Times Bestseller List or some other bestseller lists to see what is in demand for our population. One of the most important critical things is to make sure that we're supporting our curriculum in the ways that we, we need to be. So if there's a teacher that has a particular project that they would like to do, then I will definitely focus purchasing in some of those areas. Or if there's something that's happening in the, in, in the world where we need to have more resources in that area, that will also be a, a focus in any given year. But it varies all the time, year to year. It evolves and changes. I do want to speak for a moment to the fact that Karen Patnott has been working with two, one certified school librarian and one retired librarian with an MLS, Masters in Library Science, to work on this weeding project at Newton School and also through a grant, work on doing collection development within that school. And the intention is to do that same project also at the other two elementary schools, and then eventually the middle school. Part of the scope of that grant is to make sure that there is adequate materials to represent the diversity of our student population. And so that's part of what they are doing in the, in the course of this project. Weeding is the first step in that process. So I'm very hopeful about the fact that we are really looking at these school libraries that have mostly been neglected for many years, and really trying to revitalize them and make them useful to our students, the teachers, and our community at large.
Thank you. Other questions? Mayor Weidiger?
This is an extremely mundane question. If we end up storing some or many of these books, where do we plan to store them?
I don't know yet.
Oh, good.
To be truthful.
Yeah.
What I would do is work with Eric, our facilities director, to find a place that would be appropriate. But there are a lot of boxes, and we've done one library.
Yeah. I, I only ask because we have next to zero storage space in the city of Greenfield.
Correct.
So. We hope to remedy that at some point in the future.
Yes.
It's a little scary to think about more boxes and boxes of things.
If I could interject, I would say that the books that we're talking about are not worthy of storage, nor are they likely worthy of being adopted by another department within the town, or in many cases, worth passing on to other people, either because of their condition, their date, or the kinds of information that's no longer valid, accurate, or appropriate. And for that reason, the, many of the books, I would imagine, would be, the best option for them would be to have them recycled.
I was wondering about that, actually, as to whether there is also an established policy for just simply getting rid of books that doesn't involve something that we might not want to do.
Well, we do need to go through the surplus declaration process.
We can't just throw things away in the city of Greenfield. That's why we're bursting at the seams for storage.
But we're beginning, in the schools, we're beginning the process. You'll see there's another agenda item about declaring surplus. But I think we will offer to the other town departments. I make assumptions that some of them, right off the bat, would not find any interest in looking at elementary school library books. But for example, if the rec department wanted to see the list, I would very happily make that available. But certainly the, you know, the, the qualification of, "This is not current material. These are not things that, you know, I'm sure Christie would be necessarily looking to have at the rec department," but we will make the offer. And then I think we would likely recycle them, especially damaged, you know.
Further questions or discussion? So we need a motion at this point to declare the books listed on the inventories as surplus.
Salmo.
That was the mayor. And a second?
Second.
That was Member Ekstrom. Any further discussion or questions for Ms. Pollak? Okay. Are there any abstentions from voting? Any no votes? So that passes unanimously. And I thank you very much for joining us. Appreciate your time and your information. It was super helpful.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to, we're going back, a report from the student representatives. Just Mr. Shane tonight. Okay.
Yeah, just me for tonight. So we're going to start with student council for the month of March. We were very busy with conferences, the dress drive, and bleacher wars. And we are currently planning a spring fling for the beginning of May and preparing to attend the regional state council conference. At this time, I am the candidate for our school, who will be running for vice president for all of the Western Mass student councils. For class cup competitions, we've been picking up again and look forward to seeing who will be triumphant this year. And we are collecting canned tabs to donate to Shiner's Hospital. NHS, a team of members, attended a statewide virtual event called Breaking the Cycle of Hunger, where we learned about food insecurity and developed a plan for things we can do in our own community to present to the entire NHS group. We have begun plans for Relay for Life in June and continue our peer work with tutoring at GHS, eighth grade and fifth, uh, fifth grade mentoring. For Spanish Club, March was a very busy month with their 26th Annual Taste of World Cultures. We worked hard to bring back an in-person event after a two-year hiatus, thanks to everyone who participated and attended our cultural celebration. This week, 17 Spanish Club members will take off for a week exploring Spain. We'll visit five cities and are very excited for our adventure. And for French Club, after a busy month in March, March was a very busy month for everybody, I guess, planning and hosting Taste of World Cultures with Spanish Club. French Club is taking it easy in April with an after-school nature walk and picnic after break. We look forward to our spring coffee house in May and the end-of-the-year celebrations. In Spectrum, last Friday, Spectrum handed out ribbons for staff and students to wear in support of Day of Silence. Around 10 students also participated in a day-long vow of silence to bring attention to the silencing of LGBTQ+ student voices around the world. The library club held its fourth annual poetry slam in the library last Tuesday. Students and teachers shared their favorite poems and ones they wrote themselves. As April is National Poetry Month, this event was a wonderful way to celebrate our verse at GHS. And not officially library club, but still included, GHS welcomed anti-racism author and educator Tiffany Jewell last Thursday. Ms. Jewell spoke to us in an all-school assembly about her journey and ways that we can work forwards being anti-racist. A smaller group of students who have demonstrated interest in social justice issues also attended a reception with Ms. Jewell where they were able to have a more in-depth conversation with her and get their copy of the book signed. This week, both bathrooms and water fountains were reopened. With the reopening, a new policy was implemented monitoring hall and bathroom use. So rather than the whole one pass to rule the mall system that was previously put in place, that meant one pass could be used for anywhere in the building. Each hallway is now color-coded. This means that travel to one of the bathrooms, or to travel to one of the bathrooms, a pass with the corresponding color is required. Staff who were previously on bathroom duty will now be general hall monitors and in charge of checking passes. If a student does not have the correct pass or is going the wrong way, the staff will direct them towards the correct location. That is all for our report. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Toomey? I do love calling you Mr. Toomey. I know that's your name. It's still, yeah.
Yeah, it makes me feel like my dad.
I understand. That's exactly what I was talking about, Shane. I'm not hearing any questions. We always appreciate you joining us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great break. Okay, we are on to the reports from the administration. First up, ASKP.
Okay. We are in the midst of field testing our ELA high-quality instructional material. We have chosen two programs. The first field test began on Monday, April 4, and will go through April 29. The second field test will start on May 2 and go through May 26. We are proud to say we have 11 teachers at various grade levels across all four buildings participating in the field testing. I've had the pleasure of visiting classrooms and seeing the new program CKLA and Amplify in practice, and it's very exciting to see what's happening. And we look forward to collecting data. We have daily surveys from teacher feedback, as well as students, to see their engagement and their interest in each program and how that meets the district's priorities. You'll see the updated PowerPoint that I provided with my report, just so you can see what was presented to all the stakeholders, so that they knew. I apologize, it's very small. I was trying to save paper. The link is added into my report, though, so you can click on the link and read it in larger print later. And we will be, like I said, collecting data and reviewing that data after each field test. They'll debrief with each publisher after each month of field testing, and the district will ultimately be making a decision by Memorial Day. Our math curriculum, we've had the pleasure of working with Ian Stith, so twice a month we meet with him for an hour. He's a math DESI content specialist, and he's been helping our K through 4 math coaches and interventionists with the Eureka assessments. They adopted Eureka in the midst of a pandemic, and then when we came back, this is the first time every student is getting Eureka K through 4 with fidelity across all three elementaries. So it's very exciting, but it's also a year of exploration and figuring out where the kinks are and figuring out scope and sequence and what's, you know, might be eliminated versus some consolidation guides and whatnot. So our coaches, Ian, and our interventionists are really focusing on assessments. Some of the Eureka assessments are taken for sometimes five days in some grade levels, and they really can be condensed so that we can have more instructional time and less assessing time. So it's been really good to work with him, but the coaches and interventionists are working hard to make sure that those assessments really are targeted to learning standards. The district also just adopted the ESI pre-K and K kindergarten screening tool. So all of our students that are entering in pre-K and kindergarten will be using the universal screener, which is wonderful, and our teachers are very excited about that. And a reminder, kindergarten screening is Friday, so they'll be putting that into immediate action come Friday. Our professional development continues with Dr. Lourdes Alvarez Ortiz with Teaching to Strengths. Christine and I met with her this morning and debriefed about next steps and where she's headed to the middle school after vacation, and steps that we can be taking as an admin team as well that align with the work that our teachers and our administrators at the building level are doing. We also are continuing our work with the collaborative, with their social justice and equity specialists, and continue to meet with them biweekly, so that's been going well. An update on grants. There's been some exciting new things popping up in the grant world. Title I recently supported a family engagement night across all three elementary schools, bingo for books. With Title I supporting- With Title One supporting that, we asked for parent sign-in sheets so we can track parent engagement data. And it was overwhelming how many parents attended with their children. Every child left with a book, courtesy of the Title One funding. So it was really exciting to see people in person again and to have a family night event. We also were approved for up to $200,000 to pay for the first year of our high-quality instructional materials in ELA. So that was really good news for Greenfield. So proud to share that. We also are awaiting word, and I'm hoping for approval, for up to $100,000 on an accelerated math grant. And they're going to cover the costs of the first year for the math instruction at the middle school and the K-4 across the board. So we're waiting to hear from DESI on that. And lastly, they are looking for a district to participate in investigating history pilot at grades 5 through 7, where we could adopt high-quality instructional materials in history for the 2022-23 school year. So Principal Dole and I, along with the history teachers at the middle school, are talking about what that entails to be part of the pilot and deciding on whether or not we will apply for that and be a pilot school for that program next year. I have started as the chair of the advisory committee, leading the search for the new principal for Newton Elementary. Ms. Melody Goodwin is retiring at the end of June. We are happy to report. We started first-round interviews yesterday. We continue tomorrow. And we actually had an overwhelming response of qualified candidates. So we've added an additional day when we return from vacation. So we hope to make recommendations to the superintendent once that third round of principal interviews is done. We have two parents, two teachers, a unit C, and another principal in district at the elementary level serving on the committee. And we had a great day yesterday and look forward to finishing those up and finding someone to lead Newton into the future. And lastly, I mentor Principal Mike Browning and Assistant Principal Gina Johnson with DESI's Professional Learning Network for Principals and aspiring leadership. And it's been really interesting. They shared with us this month at our last meeting the new Mentor Handbook, which will be adopted for all administrators next year. But it also includes the Center for Leadership and Educational Equities Models on Culturally Responsive Leadership. There's 14 modules that they align your principal work with. So it's been nice to review how that can be put into action along with the work that we've been doing at the collaborative. And that is all I have for you folks tonight.
Thank you, ASKP. Do we have questions from the committee for Assistant Superintendent Member Exstrom, please?
I don't have any question. I just, every time that I read these, Karen, and just like from last month, this is a completely different and fully-formed whole bunch of things that you have done since last month. And what that tells me is, one, you're glutton for punishment. Two, you're really enjoying your job. And I'm really thankful for that. Because if you didn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be as successful as you are. So, good job.
Thank you.
Member Joseph, go ahead.
I echo the sentiments completely. And also, I wanted to ask if there's anything you could tell us about what steps the administration might take as part of the trauma-informed practice that you mentioned? She said there were some recommendations for how the administrative team could implement that.
Sure, it's based on the Four Pillars. And I believe you all have a copy of the book, so you could certainly read up on them. But it's building strong relationships, making sure people feel safe and secure in the environment that they're in, and having a person, so to speak, and having someone that you can go to. And I think as an admin team, we also want to create that for the leaders of our school district, where they feel safe and secure in the environment that they're operating in, where they have people that they can go to, such as Christine or myself, if something comes up. But also allowing them, you know, exploration and how we can support that work at the building levels as well. So it's really being good models of what we're asking them to do at their level.
The other, if I could add.
Please.
The other piece of that is we've scheduled its loosely termed administrative retreat after school gets out. And one of the goals of that time period will be to take the work that we're doing with Lourdes and build action plans for all of the buildings and the district as a whole, so that we have things at least planned out for next year. But we want to wait until the principals have had time to continue doing some of this beginning work with Lourdes before we build more firm plans for ways that we might work through this next year.
Other questions? Member Martini, I can't tell.
I wanted to just ask a follow-up question, which I had asked before, but maybe there's more information now, about what the feedback is from teachers and staff about how useful and effective they're finding the behavioral supports and training offered by the district and what they feel would be next steps for them.
Okay. I don't know if that really, I really don't know. That may cross the line in terms of, what is the school committee's role in getting that information now? I don't understand how that helps our work. It feels like it crosses a line there. But if you're comfortable answering it, the...
I can answer in a very generic way in that earlier in the year, we were provided very clear information that we needed to do trauma-informed work. And that was clearly, I think no one would disagree, that trauma is an area that we all need to support, especially right now. But as we get to the end of the year, there will be more opportunity for administrators to work on identifying what would be professional development opportunities for next year. And that's also something that comes out of the teacher evaluation process, is they're able to identify professional development needs. So it's a multi-layered process. But embedding trauma-informed practices is not a one-shot situation. So this work will need to continue so that we embed the philosophy into the district. So it's definitely a multi-year process, so.
Other questions? Going once, going twice, okay. Thank you. We'll take the, thank you, ASKP, very much. I'll take the superintendent's report.
Okay, so I'm highlighting a few exciting things that are coming up. It's been in the parent update a number of weeks about the return of the Film Fest and Arts Night. So that's a district-wide event. So we'll continue to put information out about that. Earlier in the year, there was a presentation that was advertised by us. And there is a follow-up. It's a follow-up to the documentary Childhood 2.0. So there is a virtual conversation that is available tomorrow night.
Excuse me?
It's tomorrow night. There's information available on our website for anyone who would like to have more conversation about the impact of social media on our youth. We also have a few concerts coming up at the middle school. There's a fifth-grade concert that's coming up, and we will be inviting parents or caregivers to come in and watch that. And then there's a full concert for the middle school bands on June 2. So more information will be coming out about that. But unless anything changes, we will also be inviting parents and families to come and watch that concert. So it's very nice to see people in the buildings. And I was able to go to two of the elementary schools for bingo for books. And it was, everybody was so excited. All the kids were very, very energized being there and playing bingo. So that was wonderful. The NESDEC work that we talked about, the Best Use of Educational Facilities study has started, and principals are filling out some very basic information about buildings, very dry, square footage, numbers of rooms, things like that. And they're working with Eric to get all of that information. And then we'll be meeting regarding each building with NESDEC at the beginning of May to start. Just getting some additional information about what kind of space we have to work with in all of the buildings. And then NESDEC folks will communicate with Eric around space available at Green River. So that's part of the conversation. Related to facilities, and actually, something that we've built into a question for the NESDEC study is Eric and Mike Browning and I have been in conversation with Lindsay Rowe at the city about a complaint that was filed years ago regarding some changes that need to be made at Four Corners for ADA compliance. And one of the things that Lindsay was working on when I started was a grant to pay for a portable wheelchair lift. And unfortunately, the grant did not come through. So at this point, we really need to move forward and get the lift taken care of. It's about $30,000, delivered, installed. So that's something that we need to take care of right now. It's going to be paid for out of school choice. And there are a number of other things that need to be addressed in that study. So this will be a topic that returns to you folks as we go. But one of the elements to that complaint is that we need to look at reorganizing some space to make some ADA compliance issues. We need to be compliant with some ADA regulations. And so I've asked NESDEC if we can look at ways to accommodate those needs when we look at how to use space. So hopefully, that will take care of some of the space and accessibility issues. And if not, we will be back for a much more in-depth conversation. Summer school, we are well on the way. We've been planning summer school for probably about six weeks, at least. And all the postings are up. This year, we are doing an integrated program. So in the past, apparently, the special education extended-year programs have been run separate. And then the Title One Summer School program has been run. So given the fact that the vast majority of all of our students are together all day anyway, we are going to run an integrated program this summer and have IAs and teachers in classrooms, and then have special educators there to support students who have special education needs. And the model exactly for that will be based on student need, you know, whether they're in the classrooms, in small groups. And then, of course, we will have our highly-specialized special education programs available in the format they need, based on their needs. But what came up as we were talking about planning summer school is unfortunately, having different programs in different buildings led to both programs sort of competing for the same staff, which was not very efficient. So we're very excited to say there are already applicants for the positions. We do need a fair number of people to run the summer school as we would like to run it. So we will have to make decisions at the end based on staffing. So you folks likely know, but extended-year programming for students on IEPs who meet particular criteria is required by law. So we need to make sure that we have that appropriately running. We also have posted for two summer school coordinators so that we have someone on-site, on the ground, all the time for coordination with busing and meals. Students will be provided breakfast and lunch if they're at summer school. So we're working with Greta, our food service director, and IT to provide whatever technology is needed. So it's a complex operation, but the first place we started was posting. And the programs will run at AEL for our preschool through first grade. And then everybody else will be at the high school in different areas, appropriately spaced, based on age. So we're excited. We think it'll be a very nicely-run program. The budget, which you probably all know, but I share anyway. You folks voted on a 7.7% increase. The budget book, the mayor's budget proposal, reflects a 6.34% increase over last year's local appropriation for the schools. Right now, Andy and I are doing year-end closeout, moving that along. So we're looking at open purchase orders, ensuring that any materials that are required at this time of year get taken care of so that we can slow the pace of spending and know the state of the budget as we get closer and closer to the end of the year. It's very common practice for us to be doing that at this stage. And I actually sent an email to all the district staff today with a summary, brief summary, of where the FY '23 budget is and the fact that they may be hearing from their building administrators about, you know, can we use this that we already have instead of purchasing this new thing? But again, that it's pretty typical closeout process. So I don't know if Andy wants to add anything to that.
It's not on the agenda topic yet. You're stealing my thunder.
Okay.
No, all kidding aside, you know, it is a normal process, as she explained. And then we also have, we continue to have, as all other districts, I believe, are, I mean, there's still personnel changes that are going on up to this point. So we, the number of changes that are still occurring, you know, you will continue to see for the next three months, budget adjustments and the encumbrances of salaries. And quite honestly, it's, we're playing catch-up just due to the massive amount of numbers regarding unencumbering people that have left and then hiring and then encumbering that. So there will still be lots of fluctuations for year-end. So rest assured, though, as I'm all kidding aside, when you look at the budget and then you look at the revolving account funds, due to, it's normal practice to, and again, do the one, you know, closeout entries at the end of the year. So instead of doing things back and forth between our revolving accounts, so when you look at the balances in the revolving accounts and you look at the, I say the quote-unquote deficit in the local, there are funds available. And there will also be more funds available once we start to, again, clean up the purchase orders on the expense side and the encumbrances on the salary side.
Can I add to that? So there's some plain language for people? So the encumbering, unencumbering, and then reencumbering, it's that person A is leaving, and their salary can't just be directly applied to person B. It has to go somewhere in between and be held there It has to go somewhere in between and be held there and then forwarded to that next person because you doing a direct line will screw up your books and you have to be able to watch it go back and forth and all those things. So that's what that meant. That's all.
Thank the goddesses for the budget people.
Okay, so the other thing that we are doing is, you've heard, I believe, um that we need to upgrade, update our technology. We have a very high number of devices, Chromebooks, desktops, um that are end-of-life, meaning that they will no longer support upgrades to the software, which affects security pieces within the software, and patches to things that the manufacturer, the software company finds that they can fix. So none of those would be able to be applied to devices that are end-of-life. We also have devices that are broken, as you will see, from the request to declare technology surplus. So before we expend substantial amount of funds, including the hundred thousand dollars that last I knew remained in the capital um request for desktop computers, we wanted to get more information about exactly what our staff was using technology for. That's from the administrative end, including our business office, our food service people, administrators to make things work. And then all of the different layers that our instructors use technology for, what types of software, what types of hardware do we need. So that I asked um staff to complete by the end of this week. So I will take a look at that, and then we will work together as a team to review what staff is saying they need technology for. And then we will work to get some samples or recommendations from different technology vendors about what types of devices could meet the needs. And it might be different things at different levels, depending. A high school student may need a very different device than a student in third grade. So we'll look at all that, and then we will prioritize where the greatest need is for replacement versus redeploying. And then thankfully, we do have funds in the ESR grant identified for technology in addition to what is currently in the capital request because we knew that this was a big expense and it has a huge impact on the way teachers instruct and the way students can demonstrate their knowledge and access information. So um it's a big project, but we wanted to get as much input as possible before just reordering more of what we already have. The other thing, Karen already mentioned the Newton School Principal search, so I won't repeat that. But the position that you folks approved a couple months ago, the Social Justice and Community Connections Coordinator, I am pleased to say that Glenn Franklin has accepted the position and will be joining us on May second. So I've met with Glenn already to talk about the beginnings of this position and um after he spilled my coffee all over my office, which he's now going to be unhappy I mentioned, but um we had a wonderful conversation and we're we're all very excited about the opportunities that Glenn can bring. And it'll be a first few months of figuring out the best ways, but I do see him being extremely involved in the work of CES and Lordis and being an on-the-ground um support for all of us in that work. So very excited.
Thank you. Questions, comments for the superintendent? Number extra.
All right, sorry. Um so the computers that are deemed not useful for us anymore but are still run, are we would we offer those to families or other people, just wiping the history and all that and saying, look, it's not great, but if you need a computer?
So we don't know yet. We haven't gotten to that point. However, with the numbers of devices that have come or will very shortly be end-of-life, the numbers that are broken, um I anticipate anything that is still operational will likely be redeployed in different ways. I don't, we are not in a position where we have surplus of technology. So it's really deciding what machines that we have available, what they can do, and where we have a need to to match that. But as we move through the process, I can I'll definitely continue, you know, providing additional information. But we are not at a one-to-one, and that would be my goal, is to get us to a one-to-one environment, meaning that every student has access to a device at all the ti- all the time for instruction. So.
Other questions? Member Johnson Musa, go ahead.
You know, the uh ESR funding kind of saved us because we need to be kind of budgeting for this going forward. So I think that we that a plan's in place for that. And how do you manage that with um having to do a big purchase all at once? Because I know one of the best practices would be to stagger the purchases, but if you need them, you need them. So how do you move towards staggered purchasing in the future?
That's a good question. Um the there the we have thoughts. I have a plan. Um one is that, so certainly, our desktops have given us an incredible life. Some of them are ten-plus years old. Not that we want to rely on any desktop technology to last that long, but if we know that our desktops have a longer lifespan than a Chromebook or a laptop, then we can sort of look to say, okay, what are the youngest ones? How many do we have? And sort of plot out um our average lifespan and look to build those in for replacement a little bit longer out than maybe the laptops. We're also looking at what grade spans might use interactive whiteboards more so than other grade spans and start replacing in waves instead. We also have grant funding that goes over a number of fiscal years. The ESR funds will go all the way through September of twenty-four. So when we look at the needs and the devices we still have that are functional, that's where we talk about, we may have to decide a grade level that gets replaced first, and then you redeploy those devices to younger grades. So that we purchase in a couple of waves and spread it out a little bit. Um it's not going to be perfect because, as you said, we purchased, it appears that almost all the technology in the district was purchased in the same fairly condensed timeframe. But I think we can do a fairly good job starting that cycle. And I will say, I was very excited and appreciative to hear the capital, the Ways and Means Subcommittee for Capital talk about um recognizing that we need to have a replacement cycle and that they would be looking for requests annually for Ways and Means for Capital. So I think there, you know, we have a couple of ways that we can spread out the purchases to not have the hugest impact on the district budget. But going forward, we're going to see a line for technology replacement unless there's a plethora of grants that start coming out, which there might, there might be, but we'll watch for that. Otherwise, it's going to have to get built into the local. Otherwise, we're going to end up in the exact same place like five to ten years from now.
Other questions? Quiet group tonight. Okay. Thank you, Christine, and we will move on to the school committee reports. No report from the chair tonight. I'm just happy we're moving along. And let's do the policy and program. Um from subcommittee reports, we have two second readings, the public comment, the update to the public comment policy and the update to the payment procedures. I would like to take those as a consent item, considering it's the second reading, if that's okay, and I think we've done that in the past.
I'd like to do my report first before we.
Oh, sure. Go ahead. Sorry.
Um we had two meetings of the policy and procedures subcommittee um since we last saw you. Uh the first was on March thirty-first, um and we were taking up the issue the school committee referred to us, which was to look at um the the recording of subcommittee meetings. Um and I I think that the interest from the the committee was for us to lay out some possible procedures, um what that might look like. We were a little hesitant to get too deeply into procedures because that's really the superintendent's domain. But there were a couple motions that came out of that um subcommittee meeting, and um maybe they can be on the agenda for the next meeting. But we did move to recommend to the full school committee that chairs read the following script immediately after calling public comment committee and subcommittee meetings to order. Per open meeting law, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this meeting. Does anyone present intend to record this meeting? And that was just a um to try to bring us into alignment with um page eighteen of the Open Meeting Law Guide, um which basically lays out um how people who are present at a meeting should be aware i- if people are recording meetings. And so this is a one way to make that happen. Um the other motion that came out was um that we recommend that the school committee direct the administration to make reasonable efforts to make audio or video recordings of all Greenfield School Committee and Subcommittee Meetings available to the public until minutes are approved and posted on the GPS K twelve website. That's to um be in alignment with the superintendent recommended in terms of best practices for not overly burdening the website with recordings and also um but to give people access to the information until the meetings are available. And that was essentially uh coming out of our own um school committee relations goals, um which is part, one of our policies that says the school committee believes that the public schools belong to the people who created them by consent and support them by taxation and that the support of the people must be based on their understanding of and their participation in the aims and efforts of the schools. Therefore, the committee declares its intent to keep local citizens regularly and thoroughly informed through all available channels of communication on the policies, programs, po- problems, and planning of the school system, and to carry out this policy through its own efforts, those of the superintendent and such information officers as may be appointed. And also to solicit the studied counsel of the people through advisory committees selected from the community and appointed to consider problems that vitally affect the future of our children. So our motion was not to get into the weeds of the superintendent's job, but just to say that, to kind of qualify that we're asking for reasonable efforts, we're not ask- asking for superhuman efforts. And um we also discussed and the superintendent agreed to kind of develop some procedures that might be workable for her to bring to the full committee, should we vote um to um direct her to do that. Um so that was our meeting on March thirty-first. Um I think it would be good if we could have these items on the uh agenda for the next meeting. Um the next thing is the um we also, at the the other meeting, we voted to move the, was it section C of our policies, forward for a second reading and because I didn't get to the superinten- get back to the superintendent about the formatting of that. We don't have that for you tonight, but that will be ready at our next meeting. Um and the superintendent and I are working on figuring out the right schedule um for advancing the rest of the um the policy review. Um so that, those meetings will continue to happen monthly. Um if there are other hot topics that the committee wants to refer back to the public policy committee, we might have to stagger them a little bit, just in terms of scheduling and bandwidth. But um so tonight, we have the uh second reading and vote on the public comment and the payment procedures, as you mentioned. Chair Prady?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Glenn, I did not realize you had a a report. I apologize. Are there questions for uh se- uh Member Johnson Musa on the report? No? Okay. So we can now move into the uh second reading and the vote. Um I'd like to do this as a consent with a motion to approve both BEDH, Public Comment Policy, and DK, Payment Procedures, um as presented.
So moved?
And a second?
Second.
Was that Member Bartini? I missed it. Okay. Uh and any discussion?
Just for the good of the public, the public comment revision was to remove the um fifteen-minute time limit so that um members of the public can speak as for as long as they have comments within the time limit for each person. And then the payment procedures was to um allow us to have a single school committee member sign off on warrants. The warrants would be available for all of us to view if we wish, but it would reduce the administrative burden on the administration uh having to chase after us to get four of us to sign off on warrants on a tight timeline.
Thank you. There are two signatures still needed for tomorrow's warrant by noon tomorrow, just so you know.
I did mine.
I did mine. So we know who can, so there's three, there's only one needed. Okay. Um thank you, Glenn. Further discussion? Okay, so we'll move to a vote. Any, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh I thought we just did a motion for BEDH only, or did you do it?
I did it combined.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, uh further discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote now. Uh any, any abstentions? Any no votes? So that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Business Office greatly appreciates that.
Does that go into effect immediately for next warrant?
Could it go in now so we don't need one? I'm just saying. I'm trying to make your life easier. Just one second.
It is fast before it's due.
Glenn said he would take care of.
I will do it.
So we'll, we'll go.
Ritual, the end of an old difficult policy.
Take one for the team.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you. Okay, so item seven on the agenda is uh related to our athletes and COVID nineteen testing requirements. Um I am not going to remember what month that we did this motion, but we did make a motion uh regarding our our COVID protocols and mitigation efforts some time ago in the fall, I believe, to um require pool testing for our athletes and or that they get testing on their own. Um and I will turn it over at this point to Christine to fill in what's what's developed.
What thankfully is not developing is much in terms of spread on our athletic teams. We really have not had a lot at all um connected to our athletic teams. Thanks, Susan, for doing that. Um but at this point, we are, the, you know, mask requirement has been lifted, we have mitigation strategies available, but not required in our buildings. And at this point, all of our spring athletics are outside. So from a nursing standpoint, they're not sure that continuing this practice is very efficient. And we also have very few cases in district in general. Um as you'll see in the parent update tomorrow, this past week, there were twelve, which is a tiny increase from last week, but we are still in very manageable numbers across the district. So at this point, we are requesting that you change your vote and change the policy and allow the athletes to no longer need to be tested to participate in the weekly athletic events. Now, these are our Greenfield High School and Greenfield Middle School team participants. Obviously, we have other students in district who participate in athletics, but that are not on those two specific teams.
Thank you. Thank you. Um let's see, let's do a motion, I think the word would be repeal. Does that sound like a good word to use? So a motion to repeal the COVID nineteen testing requirements for student athletes in the district.
So move.
That was Member Wall. A second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mayor Wiedegarder, please.
So um the, do you recall, because I don't, what the testing requirement was? Is it two days before an event and a day?
No, weekly pool testing.
Weekly pool testing? That's right.
It had to be, the results had to be in, I believe, by the Friday of the week so that they could participate in any upcoming events, or they had to wait until the following week's pool testing.
So I understand when when you say that that there are few cases, and I'm really happy to hear that. But I guess I'm having a little trouble understanding what was so onerous about being tested and why wouldn't you continue it?
So there are a couple pieces that, one, we have in the past couple weeks had some challenges with the testing partners that we've had coming in. So we've been running extremely short-staffed. And the fact that the nurses at the high school and middle school needed to follow up with athletes who hadn't done the pooled testing, had to follow up with coaches, with the lists, it was the management of it. And at this point, that is the only strategy that's mandated for our middle school and high school, you know, interscholastic athletes. And it's, with all the other things that need to be done, the burden on the nurses is substantially more than the benefit that we believe we are gaining from the mandated pooled testing.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Member Denise, go ahead.
Are the athletes outside the entire time? Or is there locker room time?
Generally, they have time that they can be in the weight room or in locker rooms, but they are also together in indoor spaces all day with each other. So the participation in all of the games and much of the practice, I mean, it's baseball. Obviously, the bulk of baseball, softball practice is outside. Um it's with the weather, a lot of the teams are outside. So again, we feel like the exposure for the athletes specifically is no different than exposure for them during the academic day. So that the benefit is really not substantial as it was when they were in close contact during fall and winter sports.
Were the athletes all required to be pool tested or only whoever was given um approval by guardians? Because I know only like a third of the kids in my.
They were all required. They were given uh the ability. They were all required. They were given the ability to do the testing on their own if they did not want to participate in the pool testing, but the deadlines were the same. The frequency and deadlines were the same.
Okay.
Other discussion or questions? Member Johnson Musad?
I guess, I mean, it sounds like it makes sense for right now. And I guess my question is, is there a way to set it up so that there's a triggering event to put it back in place? For example, when they're back indoors more of the time, or when the number of infections in the community goes up versus repeal it and then we'll have to meet again, right, to reinstitute it?
I think, these are two thoughts that I have of my own opinion, that, one, we would be working with the Department of Public Health, state level and Greenfield, around any changes to any mitigation strategies. Quite honestly, for any communicable issue, you know, it, flu, for example, could require us to have conversation about what we do, about levels of infection. I also feel that if we were to need to move into use of mitigation strategies again, some of the conversation we could have would be about what would be policy and what would be procedure that would be able to be instituted by me. I mean, you know, at the administrative level, rather than everything being in policy, so that we would have some flexibility in terms of watching numbers, working with DPH, working with the high school and middle school administration around infection rates, you know. I think it would be very challenging at this point in what is being described as becoming an endemic, to put hard and fast numbers on. If it reaches X number of cases, we will reinstitute. So, I do appreciate the concern that we will need to watch. But, I also don't feel all that differently about the need to be mindful of infection rates with influenza every year, or my personal favorite, the stomach virus. But, not suggesting masks is for all of that. But, those events would require communication with DPH around what we should be doing. So, I don't know if I answered you, but.
Yes. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. We can move to a vote. Are there any abstentions?
I'm an abstention.
Member Johnson Musad and Mayor Weidergartner are both abstaining. Any other abstentions? Any no votes? Member Denise is a no vote. So, let's have hands up for the yeses, so we can count them. One, two, three, four. Okay. So, that does pass with four votes. Thank you. And Andy, it's your big moment. Budget update.
Well, Dr. DeBard stole my thunder, so I can just answer any questions that you may have. But, in all seriousness, just a couple of updates. If you look on the revolving account sheet, there's a cell that's in red with a yellow notation to it. That's because the practice has been that we only use the prior year amount of circuit breaker receipts that were received. And if you were to look in, if you can see in the red, it's slightly over. So, we're going to do a journal entry reclass to get it down to what our practice has been. That was just a notation for, if anyone quite honestly caught that, we are being preemptive and just letting you know that we recognize that it's more than the prior year amounts that were received. Speaking of circuit breaker, the state has a program called Extraordinary Relief where districts can apply for it if their special education tuition claims exceed 125% of their current claims as far as the circuit breaker eligible expenses. We applied for it and we did not get it. So, we came up short. So, I would like to, you know, see the detail behind it, honestly. But, Dr. Dickinson was told that we did not reach a threshold to receive the reimbursement claim. So, we'll see, you know, once we look at the detail, if there's any adjustments potentially. But, according to the state, it's hard for communities our size to reach that threshold. Dr. DeBard and I don't buy that because it's 125% of your current rate. So, regardless of the size, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't make a difference. So, anyway, so, we're going to see the detail, but as of right now, we did not. So, and then, just to reiterate again, in all seriousness, we are going through the normal year-end process. It is admittedly a cumbersome process this year, more than ever, regarding the personnel changes that are continuing to occur. And we are revisiting all those as fast as we can. So, I will say, the bottom line with those personnel changes, you will see, quite honestly, funds flow out to the bottom of available because of the fact that we always have the, someone leaves, there's the posting of the position. So, there's always a time period of where there's no funds being expended for that position. So, that will all come out in the wash, as I say, as of June 30th. But, I can answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pickett? No questions? All right. I appreciate all of your efforts on FY22 and FY23. We are happy to have you.
It's great to be here.
Especially here for the whole meeting. It's so nice. I mean, you can go now.
Yes, to stay.
Okay. Well, yeah. We have done Item 9, which was the surplus items books. Item 10 on the agenda is the vote for surplus items for technology. The same process and rules for surplus property apply as with the books. There is a list that was provided. And before we discuss, I would take a motion to declare the technology listed on the inventories as surplus.
So moved.
I think that was the mayor. And a second?
Second.
Okay. And discussion, please? When I see that it's out of warranty, doesn't work, and can't be updated, I think we need to probably declare it surplus. And I think that was the whole list.
Not only are some of them out of warranty, broken, and can't be updated, they have been used for parts. We are, our IT staff is making magic with some of the technology that we have. So, when they say it is surplus, it is without question unusable anymore.
I have no doubt. As a state worker myself, I have no doubt what it means to have surplus technology be declared surplus. Further questions or discussion?
Could I just provide one more?
Sure, please.
There's just one last tidbit. We will go through the process of offering the technology, but there is a, an official technology recycling process. We have a company that we use. Dr. Holsberg has already reached out to them. So, it, there will be a big truck that comes. And I do expect this is the first of several requests. The technology department has not had the ability to go through their inventory because of needing to meet all the technology needs over the past few years. So, there's a backlog that needs to be addressed, and they've started that. So, this, this is the first of a few, anyway, technology surplus requests that we'll be making.
Thank you.
Can I drop off my surplus tech?
No. Okay. It sounds like we're ready for a vote regarding the surplus technology. Any abstentions from this vote? Any no votes? So, that passes unanimously. Thank you all. And Item 11, this is the item I've been waiting for. I'm pretty excited about the NESTC enrollment projections. I'm actually just going to let Christine do the whole introduction here.
Well, that was it. So, this was phase one of the work that is complemented by the educational facility use. I am not going to read this to you. You can all peruse it. If you have questions, I may, if you have questions tonight, I may just document them and reach out to NESTC. Not having done the study, I can't necessarily speak to the methods, especially in the statistical realm. But, you know, you can see that there's some anticipated fluctuation, but over the years, there has been, you know, a decline in enrollment across, across the board. And there's some minor expected decline to continue. I mean, again, we're talking zero to approximately 3% decline is anticipated each year across the district. So, that could end up being one student in a grade level, which is not substantially impactful. But, the court, over the course of years, they're anticipating in the next 10 years, a decrease of about 250 students district-wide.
Thank you for this. I did have a chance to peruse it, and I am going to actually turn it over for questions or comments from everyone else first, and then I just have a couple of questions myself. Questions, comments? That's your extra. Go ahead.
As always. So, just in looking at this anecdotally, obviously, I haven't dug into it all that much, but it looks like we're losing students when they, when it gets to first grade for pre-K and kindergarten. And then, when they get to, when that cohort gets to first grade, it drops pretty consistently as I'm looking across the years.
What page are you on?
This one right here. Maybe.
The historical?
Yeah. Sorry. Maybe it's just me. Maybe I'm looking too far back and trying to read too much into it. Yeah, it's Page 2. Maybe it's too soon to respond to that, and we don't have anything in front of you to.
I have the numbers that you have in terms of why that might have been historically. I can't speak to.
Other questions or comments?
Just to say that it seems to be, that her observation seems to be supported by the content that they're saying here, just in their summary, which is that we tend to, if enrollment is stable in grades one through eight, that's a predictor of enrollment stability. And we seem to be losing from one through eight, an average, it looks like a 38, it's a minus 38. So, I assume that means 38.
If you're looking at Page 2?
Yeah, I'm only looking at one. I'm looking at the overall assessment. So, I think what I, my question was where, and I haven't had a chance to really study the historical piece. So, I was just, I'd be curious to know where, in grades one through eight, where are the places where we're losing?
So, what I can speak to is I do have some information about where some of our students are, have been going since 2016. These are general categories. So, some of them, based on our data, this is taken from a January 1st report that we are required to provide to the state. The statistics are provided every year. The reason we're pulling the January 1st report is because that's the point in the school year when the state differentiates where students have gone, such as collaboratives, tech schools, things like that. Prior to, it's not as detailed. So, across the course of the years since 2016, there has been fluctuation in the overall enrollment, just students in a general sense. Some things that we have seen fairly steady is the vocational technical enrollment is fairly consistent over those years. Collaboratives, which are both for general education and at times, students in special education programs are both reflected. That's also fairly consistent. Charter schools also fairly consistent, somewhere around 100 students a year since 2016. Out of District Public, which includes students who are in special education programs outside of the district, but also students who, school choice out of Greenfield, have actually, they've stayed fairly consistent, but actually declined somewhat. So, in numbers. So, in 2016, we had 300, then it went to 308, 331. And now, this year, we are at 268. So, homeschooling had quite a peak in 2021, as we are not surprised. And we are back a little bit higher than the trend at 87, but in 2000, it was at 79. So, it's, it's a slight uptick over those six, seven years of about 20 students between 2016 and this current year. And then, some of the other numbers reflect students who are in even private schools such as Eaglebrook or, you know, where parents choose to tuition their children in. Some of these are also special education schools that are in the state of Massachusetts. So, those categories are reported together in this report, which has been up and down over the course of the past seven years. And then, the same for private or parochial out of state. That has actually increased in the last two years from one to this current year's 24. But, again, that's a combination of students who are attending special education programs that meet that criteria and privately paid tuitioned outside of Massachusetts.
Thank you.
That's your extra. Go ahead.
I actually would ask the mayor this. I'm just, when I'm looking at this, Connor was in school around the time that the, when these, he was graduating around the time when all these things are being projected. And I remember that for a while there, it was sort of, the schools were really struggling. And I think that you were on the school committee. I'm not saying, and you were on the school committee. I'm saying, I think, am I correct in that? Or is that, is that around?
When?
Like 2011, 10, 9?
I was not.
You weren't? It's like, before that? I'm sorry?
I was on school committee in the late 90s.
Dear God. Well, I'm way off then. Never mind. Sorry. Then I'm not looking at you. So, then, part of it, I think, and I'm trying to remember, if some of the reason is because there, the district was struggling, Karen, maybe you remember? You've been around a long time. I don't know, people. Come on. And so, why that would be a decrease in numbers when it would be, people would be going to first grade or second grade? That's all I'm, that's all I'm driving at. That could be why.
I am happy to ask NESTC if they have any global thoughts on why a district might see a decrease at that age range. I'm happy to get that. But, in terms of why since 2011 that pattern has existed, I'm happy to ask and see if they have any insight into why that might be.
Okay. Thank you. I just, yeah.
Other questions, comments? Member Martini, go ahead.
I just had an observation that it seems like the relationship between births and kindergarten enrollment used to be more closely related than it is now. Or, maybe that's just the way it looks on this data. But, it seems like at the beginning of this chart that, which goes back to 2011, that the two were not identical, but pretty close. But, since then, it seems to have developed a fairly consistent gap of maybe about 50 students. So, that was just something that I was observing. I don't know if you have any insights about that. And then, I had a, just a general question about how the district gathers information from parents about their reasons for not choosing Greenfield schools.
At this point, I'm not aware that we have a formal process. So, that's something that, you know, we would look to do when anyone is withdrawing, to find out, are you moving because you moved? Are you moving for? Are you moving for a variety of reasons? I don't know that we would know why they don't choose Greenfield if they never enroll. But I'm absolutely looking to have some type of, you know, disenrollment information gathered going in future years.
Thanks. That was going to be my follow-up question, was whether we have the ability to kind of expand that inquiry to families who don't enroll in the first place and try to gather information so that we understand better.
I think that would be a bigger project to get figured out. But getting something in place so that we can at least ask for feedback of people who are leaving is something we can do. Whether people choose to complete that would be up to them. But we certainly can have the process in place to ask.
Other questions, comments? I just, I think I have two. What sort of frequency should we put on getting new enrollment projections? How often does a district do that as a best practice? If you don't know, we can wait on it.
We can ask. I mean, typically I hear about it being done every 10 years, but we can certainly make the request. I mean, Andy may have more global insight.
It varies. I mean, communities and districts that are potentially looking at, you know, substantial, you know, building issues, both citywide and, and also school-wide regarding facilities. They might do it with some more frequency than a, than a 10-year. I'll say just for this general geographical area of the state of Massachusetts, as well as the Berkshires. It's, it's at the end, if you've seen all the studies. It's the enrollment declines are being seen substantially in Berkshires, Franklin County, and the Cape. You know, so that's a thing where, you know, refreshing it, I mean, you could refresh it, you know, more frequently than a 10-year review. But, you know, the, the trends seem to be even just, say, on the anecdotal census data that you might get from community-wide, would be holding true to those trends.
Thank you. And then my other question is kind of around what NSDEC provides in terms of interpretation or guidance around this and the facility stuff.
So they will do a report to the school committee connected to the facilities. And this is a part of it. So looking at what our numbers are projected to be will influence some of what they suggest in terms of building use. So I will forward any questions that any members may have about the enrollment study and forward that to our NSDEC consultants for the facility study. And I'm looking at Vice Chair Wal to see if she remembers. I believe that NSDEC was anticipating a report before the end of the school year. Thank you. Yes, I didn't want to say that without checking, checking my memory. So it will be a fairly quick turnaround. So if there's anything that comes up between now and then, I'm happy to forward it and get them to speak to it when they're present to the full committee.
And I guess I do have just one more question regarding the NSDEC process and their capacity. If we needed more in terms of, you know, deeper dives into the stuff or consulting around how to use it? Is that something they provide? Is it something you're, you feel like you could get if you needed out there in the universe?
I think that NSDEC is probably a part of that universe, but that there's a variety of resources, depending on what the question is.
Yeah.
So I think it would, it would be a good process to see what questions or what further pieces the committee might want to explore. And then we could decide if we have the capacity or if it would be better for us to get additional support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Member Denise, go ahead.
I have a question data-related, but maybe not related to NSDEC. But piggybacking on what Member Martini asked. Do we have a parent survey that we send out that would give us information on future enrollment? We don't do that on a yearly basis?
Well, parent survey, we reach out to the people who have children of the age that should be coming into kindergarten.
But we don't have like a survey every year?
Preschool. I apologize. Preschool. We reach out.
But there's no reaching out survey in later years for parents? For the district to gather information about whether they're planning to continue enrollment or anything like that? Any sort of data?
No, there's a, a process if a family is moving to unenroll. But we don't actively ask parents if they're staying. We somewhat make the assumption that they'll continue unless they tell us otherwise.
This is interesting information. This is good to know because it seems like maybe we should do something like that. Collecting satisfaction and enrollment possibilities and future, that seems like that would be a really good thing to do, to reach out.
I'm, I think I would have to think about the work required to actively request whether people are coming back or not versus the benefit to that, especially because oftentimes we don't get a great return on things that are sent out and we ask parents to return. So I'm not sure that that would give us a lot of information that we don't necessarily have about whether you're planning to return.
Okay. It's just a survey I'd always filled out as a parent, so I'm just curious.
Other questions or comments? Mayor, you have your microphone on, which is why I'm looking at you. Mayor Rita Gardner. Yeah. Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely hear that it does, it's very resource-intensive to like, reach out and ask for those questions. And it would, I think it would have to be part of a much larger kind of project that would be evaluating parents in Greenfield and why they go and why they stay and all of that. I, I think there could be a lot of value to that, but it doesn't sound like something, it's not just part of like routine administration of...
At this point, I think any piece of that, that would give us the most information the fastest would be to instituting the exit questions. I think that is something, I know that is something that we can institute fairly easily and have a procedure for that to be provided to families. You know, that, that's something that we can do easily and gather some, I believe, very important information fairly quickly. After some of the more acute needs are addressed, I think we could absolutely look at other ways to get feedback from families. But right now, I think the exit piece is absolutely something that we would prioritize.
Other questions or comments? I don't see that there's any motion required. So I think we can move on to the next item. Last call for any questions or comments. All right. So we have follow-up for the superintendent's evaluation, which is specifically the goals added to the items in the superintendent's evaluation that we, so this is like step two. I'm losing my train of thought. This is like step two. And I, I have looked these over and actually did not provide any feedback to, to changing them. I think the, the superintendent is the expert on what is the content here. But it's an important part of the process to have us see the steps as they unfold. And we can have any comments or questions about this. And I don't see really a need for a motion on this because it really is a self-directed process by the superintendent that's just monitored by us. And we'll have plenty of time to have plenty of motions related to the actual evaluation, if all are in agreement about that. Secretary Exstrom, go ahead.
Yeah, as always, I have a question. District improvement goals, when you had, when we were interviewing you, and I know that you're doing a lot of stuff, so I'm not trying to hold you to anything. But when we were interviewing and you had started, you had talked about when you're building a budget, you do it, you think about it for more than just the immediate next budget. You do that out across the next couple of years. I, I wonder if that would be relevant to add to district improvement goals? I don't know. I don't, I'm...
So the, so I guess two pieces.
Okay.
One, with all due respect, the goals were already voted on. The...
Okay, nevermind that.
But the piece in terms of budget development reflecting priorities over multiple years, I believe one piece of that is included in the 23 budget because it includes resources from the ESR grants. It also, which I can certainly speak to more when we get to the point of sharing evidence, speaks to utilizing, you know, the prior year's remaining funds, looking at reallocating. So it's a piece of looking, looking backwards, what we've done, what remains, looking forward. And also the piece related to the funding for technology over a course of years. In truth, knowing more now about Greenfield and the system and what the, even though all of you were quite clear about priorities and needs during the interview process, even having more firsthand experience with those. And Karen and I working together across the course of the year around grants and program development. Every one change that gets made, such as the curriculum changes, prompt other priorities that we need to look at. So it's evolving. But yes, when we get to sort of evidence and looking at how I'm thinking about supporting the changes we're making over the course of years, I, I will be happy to speak to that. Thank you.
Any further, Mayor Rita Gardner, go ahead.
Related to that, and this may be something for the future, near future, maybe under district improvement goals, there's a short-term and a long-term section, if that's possible. So to, to address Member Exstrom's concern, or not wasn't a concern, but comment regarding more than a year.
So I think one of the pieces that we as a group will have more opportunity to talk about as we get into this process for next year, which we did not have the luxury of this year at all, is talking about whether the goals should be one year or two year. This was somewhat an urgent process to get some priorities established. But we can, through the superintendent evaluation process through DESI, establish whether they're one-year or two-year goals. And, you know, as long as we all come to agreement on how that would look, I, I feel like we can be flexible in terms of timing on that. So as long as we have more than 10 seconds to plan how it would roll out for next year. Very, very reasonable question on that from, from both of you.
Probably won't happen. More than 10 seconds to plan.
Maybe 12.
Oh, well, then you're good.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Christine. The next thing on the agenda, item 13. We had said we would talk, discuss setting up public forums for the school committee members to hear from members of the public. And I will moderate and open this up to the committee on how folks have envisioned they want to approach this. Member Denise, go ahead.
Okay, I'll start because I totally ran on this. So most everybody came and said that they wanted to have a way to talk to the school committee to do public comment in a long-form sort of way. And the thing that was the most important was the time. Not necessarily the place. No one seemed to have a lot of problem with John's on, but it was too early in the day for working parents. And there was no childcare. So everyone kept saying...
I'm sorry. What are you discussing?
Discussing having public forums.
No, I mean, what are you referring to now that was too early in the day?
Having, people kept saying that they can't come and do public comment here because it starts at 6:00 PM.
Public comment at school committee meetings is what you're discussing. Okay. I just didn't know where that was coming from. Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, so 6:00 PM is like dinnertime and everyone's interacting with their kids and they don't really have the time. And there isn't childcare if they can get away. So a lot of people were saying that if they could only come and make public comment at a time that was reserved just for public comment, like a special meeting just for that, that they would utilize that and be appreciative of that and feel that that was a way to reach out to the community. So I think we've heard a lot of people suggest things like that. But it was very specifically the time, childcare issues. So I wonder if we can address those things and make it more accessible and equitable.
Anyone else? Mayor Rita Gardner, go ahead.
I don't have a, a problem with that at all at the moment. I don't know what is a good time. Sometimes our meetings are very long after a long day for many of us. But I guess I was curious as to what were we really talking about? Are we talking about something that happens outside of a school committee meeting? It might be better, parents might be better served if there was, I don't know, a public forum every other month or quarterly or, you know, I, I think, I think what you're saying and you're saying and we're all saying is it's not something that has happened in recent years. So it's kind of up to us to decide how it could happen. And is it something that's outside of school committee meetings, but not like monthly? Maybe it's quarterly or, as I say, every other month or something.
Thank you.
I feel like maybe we might benefit from hearing more from parents about what they were thinking in terms of a public forum. Is it a public forum on a specific issue? Ms. Thompson, correct? Brought up three things. Might be a good starting point, one of those three things, a public forum on X. But I'm just throwing this out. I'm not saying I'm committed to that and only that.
Thank you. Member Martini?
I think the idea is to have listening sessions, something that's not a school committee meeting. But the purpose of the event is to gather input from members of the community, particularly parents. And I think it makes sense to hold it on a similar schedule to what the mayor was just saying. And I don't know if, I think it's fine to have a session devoted to a particular topic. But I would also like to still leave some of the time open for parents who wish to raise whatever is important to them. Because for me, that's kind of the point. And I also want to be mindful of equity issues. And I would just note that Greenfield Gardens, Oak Courts, and Leiden Woods each have a community room. And I don't know whether the logistics of those particular spaces would work for that, but I would like it if we could explore that.
Thank you. Secretary Exstrom?
I just want to follow up on what Member Martini was saying. I think, I don't, I don't, I don't know that we would get our best responses from people if it was a forum as opposed to, this is far more relaxed, I guess, than I would want, as opposed to coffee with the school committee member. Because it's, you know, when I think about this, it's people struggle with us not being able to respond to them when they're doing public comment. And frankly, I struggle with not being able to respond to people because we all know me. And I just, I think, I, I think that families are looking for that give and take. And having a or a couple of school committee members together, it can't be quorum, obviously. And because then you have four people together. But also, I think everyone who, parents that come to the meeting need to understand that a single person doesn't have sort of policy authorization to do anything other than to listen and sort of convey information. And they can, you know, make very generalized comments. But that isn't, that isn't something that a single person can do beyond, you know, yes, we absolutely should change that. That isn't anything that a single person can do. That's my thought.
Oh, wow. Look at all the hands now. So I saw...
I'll wait.
So sure, so Member Johnson Musad, and then we'll just go down the line there.
Yeah, there's nothing prohibiting any...
Yeah, there's nothing prohibiting any school committee member from hosting their own open office hours or listening session as individuals. I think that there is an interest from the public in us collectively listening in a public forum that could be, you know, recorded and broadcast or what have you. And I think it would be great. I think that we can't necessarily know from where we are now, what frequency or what format might work. We could try scheduling two listening sessions in different locations at different times, one that's just kind of an open call, and another one that has a topic that might, you know, attract interest. So I guess I'd encourage us to be thinking in terms of like piloting something and gathering data about what works and what doesn't, and adjusting and trying something else. None of us will really know what will work until we try different things.
We absolutely can meet together as a group. We cannot make any decisions or discuss. That's it, period. There's nothing preventing all of us from being in the same room at the same time.
Member Neve.
I think the purpose of it is to increase positive public relations with the community. And I think that we have a public relations problem with the community. It's been going on for a long time. I mean, that's why I'm here. Like, I, as a parent, was mad enough to run. So there's a reason behind that. And I think part of it is like, just listening is taking down the temperature, is just being available. And it is one thing to say, you know, I'm sorry, I can't make this change, I can't run off and write policy for you. I think people understand that, but I think part of it is just being able to open mouths and, and eyes and ears and just be there as people. And it wouldn't have to be a full school committee. It could just be a couple people who have the time. It doesn't have to be all of us. Maybe, maybe only Susan and I have the time for one, for example. And I think that that's totally valid and totally something that a community should expect, to be honest with you, because it feels very removed. I don't feel like we have a sense of community in these schools. I, as a parent, don't even feel like I could go to the school for any reason at all. Like, it feels that far away from me compared to how open it was at other schools. And I'm not the only parent that feels that way. So I think that if we could connect and at least give them the ability to express what they need to express, whether it's something we can do or not, I think is so valuable. Being able to say, I don't know, I can't fix this for you, but I hear you, is very important. And I think that we kind of fail on that pretty much across the board, to be honest with you. So I'd love to do it, and, and there's no reason why not to just try it. It's just an experiment. I mean, if it doesn't go, it doesn't go. If people don't want it, they don't want it, but it should be offered.
Thank you. Other comments? Member Martini.
I just appreciated what Member Johnson Musad said about piloting a couple of different ways of doing it, rather than feeling a big onus to get it right, right now. And I would certainly like to see those couple of opportunities be set up at different times because working parents are incredibly busy. I know I am. And we have families on all different kinds of schedules. So I would certainly like to give, you know, all of them a crack at it, both, you know, parents that are working nine to five Monday through Friday, parents that are working second shift, like, people are on different schedules. So I would like to see us try to kind of offer a couple of diverse kind of options and see what we can get.
What else? Doesn't sound like there's anyone who doesn't want to do it. Vice Chair Wall, you didn't chime in, you're good with it?
I guess my only confusion is what time? I mean, this is 6 o'clock, 8 o'clock, 2 o'clock? I mean, that's my, I have no problem at all with doing these kinds of meetings. I think that would be great, as long as we understand we can't promise anything as a member of a school committee. And, but I don't understand what time works for everybody.
Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I, I think it's definitely clear that there's no one time that will work for everybody. So I think thinking about it as a diverse offerings, you know, maybe offering one, I don't know, at 8:00 PM on a, on a weeknight at, you know, Oak Courts, and another one on a Saturday at noon at Leiden Woods or something like that could be ways to experiment.
Sorry, I was conversing about doing a survey. We do have the capacity as a district to do a survey of parents regarding the questions that we just, oh, sorry, just talked about here. So we could get that through the central office. Is that something folks are agreeable to, survey of families? Yeah?
Yeah, and I think finding out their childcare needs as well, and if there's a way we can...
How would we approach that? Okay, how do we, I, I'm not comfortable with the childcare thing. Like, we're getting into, come on.
There have been communities who've done it. And I think the point is that childcare is expensive, difficult to arrange for some parents to get to a meeting. It's kind of required. I think that they're probably, if we got creative, we could probably find a way to make it work. That's my opinion.
Without any liability to the school committee? Like, I'm very concerned about that piece of it. I don't, I don't let, well, I, I think we start small. I think we start with just trying to have one. Forget childcare, forget broadcasting it, just have one in a public location so that you can get some momentum, see how it works, work out a few kinks. I'm, I, that's my only thing, is that let's not bite off more than we can chew. Let's find, let's try a couple of things and find a strategy that works. Other questions or comments? How do we want to proceed from here?
I think the survey piece sounds like a very good start because we can not only gauge and ask about appropriate timeframes, days, but topics and, you know, in a structure, top, not structure, bad word, but you know what I mean, topics, open, open forum.
Format, yeah.
You know, format, open forum, not open, meaning topic after topic or whatever.
So for next steps, it sounds like we'll do the survey, we'll work with the superintendent to get that out to families. And then is it reasonable, do we want to schedule a follow-up on the survey? Is it, it's probably too quick to turn it around for the May meeting, but we could do...
No, we could do that.
For May?
Sure.
Okay, okay. So we have a survey results for a May meeting, and we can take next steps then, unless anyone else wants to add something we want to make sure we work towards right now besides the survey. Secretary Exstrom.
I don't know if it's beside the survey, but I would much rather do like 10 o'clock on a Saturday than an evening because...
Speak for yourself.
I just, yes.
That's the thing, you're never...
Speak for myself.
You're never going to agree. We're never going to agree on times. We're going to have to do different times.
I just, you know, the later at night, I, parents are stressed, nobody's eaten, or they've eaten too much, or someone needs to go to the bathroom or whatever. I don't care, people can bring their kids, because I got kids and probably will have one of them with me.
I think it's an excellent example of, you know, what works for one person won't work for another one.
Absolutely.
And you're, you're a model parent, but so is someone else for whom 8:00 PM would be the perfect time, so.
I can also survey committee members and get a general sense of who's available weekends, evenings, daytime, so that we can ensure that whatever parents are interested in, we actually have committee members who could go. So.
5:00 AM.
I'd have to get up early.
All right, thank you all. Hold on, technical difficulties here. Okay. So that is item 13. This is item 14, which is the endorsement of the Fair Share Amendment, which, we did just get this tonight.
Yes, and my apologies for not getting this to you sooner, and thank you to the superintendent and Lauren for at least getting this in our packets tonight. You know, one option is I could kind of read it out loud, and we, if we decided we wanted to vote on it tonight, we could. If not, we could table it for another meeting. I don't think there's time urgency, but it's not too long, so we could read, have a reading of it.
I was actually going to ask for a motion to table it until the May meeting, simply because I, I, in, in full disclosure, learned everything I knew about it from Doug tonight, and I would like a chance to read this, which I didn't have a chance to do. And also have an opportunity for the public to let us know what they think about it, because we haven't really had that opportunity. Can we get this added somewhere to the materials for this meeting? Can we have Lauren on it?
On my, it might actually be, but I'll confirm.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So can I get a motion to table the Fair Share Amendment for the May meeting?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And any further discussion? Okay, so we'll move to a vote. Any abstentions? Any no votes? So that passes unanimously. Thank you. How about new business? That is item 15. Anyone? I have one thing. I would like us to consider having, instead of our student representative, actually look at having a student that serves as a school committee member, like a full school committee member. It would take some research and some planning and some discussion, and we'd obviously want to get comments, but I'm interested in actually having something that would be a more permanent and active member of the school committee that is from the student body. So I would like to put that up for our consideration. Anything else?
Do you want to comment on it now or later?
You can comment on it now, we just can't make any great decisions about it now.
It, it would require a charter change.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm fairly certain.
I'm fairly certain you're right. And, I mean, we probably should at some point also, in preparation for the next charter review in 10 years, and I'm not kidding, actually look at the charter a little more closely for school committee things. I do believe from my brief purview of it that there are a couple of things right now that still conflict, so we want to take a look at that and also talk about things that we may want individually in, to discuss about the charter or collectively about the charter. So I'll add that as a new business item. Other? Member Martini, please.
We had a member of the community ask for the committee to address security question and answer sessions for parents, which I think sounds like it would be different from a listening session because it involves answers.
So I mean, yeah, go ahead.
And the school committee's relations with teachers and members of the community.
Okay, so I'm going to have, I'm going to start by addressing the security one directly. So executive session, where we meet privately as a school committee, is actually, one of the exemptions that allows executive session is for security discussions. It is not something that, as a best practice, we as a committee or us as a district should be discussing in, in public. It does not make sense to discuss your security measures and profiles in public unless we can find very general ways to collect feedback and things like that. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, that's accurate.
Okay. So we have to tread lightly with security. It's not, if we talk about it in public, then it's not secure. It's, it's really that simple. And the other one was, okay, so school committee relations with students and teachers, that's the central office, the superintendent, the leadership and administration's job. It's really not something we need to develop as a school committee. But I would be happy to hear public comment about that, to receive emails about that. I just don't know how we address that, and I would certainly want to discuss it further, have comment here. I don't know what we're actually wading into with that. Gardner, go ahead.
I had a sense that Ms. Thompson was asking us to develop our security plans, but talk more generally...
Talk more generally about perhaps a philosophy of security, but also, that's maybe a little above what we would be talking about, but more, more generally about the concepts of security for the different grade levels and different stu, different buildings and so forth. It quickly could get to a conversation about our security measures. I get what you're talking about. So if, if there was a way to think about security and talk about it and hear from parents about it that didn't involve that, that would be good, but...
I'm gonna, thank you. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that direct questions to the superintendent regarding security issues from parents in the community would be the best way to address this. Do you agree?
I think that's the best first way to do that, and if I can respond and/or gather that general theme and bring it to the full committee, because it's something that it can be talked about in an open session, we can definitely do that. Many security things really wouldn't be talked about in a public session, other than we are aware and we continually work on it. But I think if we were to get a theme from people about the questions, then we could at least identify if that's an executive session or a public session conversation.
Thank you. Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
The other thing that I heard tonight was the, that our, we do have a policy that calls for the school committee to do its own self-evaluation, and it's true that we have not been doing or implementing that, so that could be a good topic for a future meeting.
I just wanted to clarify, and I might be wrong, but I didn't get the sense that the, the question was about the security practices of the district or procedures or what have you, but more about behavior and student safety. And a few months ago, this was a big topic. At that time, the superintendent had shared some information about the school environment and how things were going in that regard. And I wonder, could you provide an update, more information about how things have been going since that time at our next meeting, and can that be a topic? I can. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else for new business? At this point, we do intend to go into an executive session for exemption reason number seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, approval of executive session minutes from March 9 is what we are doing, and we will not return to open session. So I would take a motion to open the executive session, please.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? And, okay, any abstentions? Any no votes? Okay, that's a unanimous to move into executive session, and then a motion to adjourn the public session, please.
So moved.
Member Johnson Musad, and a second.
Second.
Everyone seconded, so we're going to say that that's a unanimous adjournment at 8:08 PM. Thank you all.